And then the initial response from the county as far as lease costs was anywhere from fourteen to twenty-five dollars a square foot, which you use that same thirty-nine-hundred number, you're looking anywhere from fifty-five thousand, almost a hundred thousand. I asked if that was a monthly rent or an annual rent, and they didn't really respond to me, they just said make an offer. So again, depending on where that would be, those numbers begin to add up very quickly, and then add on the cost of either cost sharing or providing a security guard and salary and benefit costs with that. It adds up very quickly, which is why we were holding back to wait on the decision with regards to the police station.
Thank you, Harold. Can we just move right along? To our three o'clock?
That's me.
It's you.
Yeah. It's kind of weird because I'm never down. Hey, here we go. As most of you know, I am the city clerk for the city of Minnetonka. I am under the city manager budget, so I don't have my own department. Anything that I put in the budget would be under the city manager budget. So I just kind of do a quick overview of the things that I need. But since I have a lot of you here, since somebody reminded me at lunch today, your candidate campaign disclosure forms are due this week, so if you could email me them, that would be great. So for my budget, when I started and took the job as city clerk from the finance department, part of my job description was that I get accredited through some sort of organization. Looking through organizations, I picked IIMC. IIMC is an annual membership of two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a year. To obtain a CMC, which would be a municipal clerk accreditation, would require two years of good standing with the organization, IIMC. You have to have sixty points of education and fifty points of experience. North Dakota unfortunately does not have any accredited certification programs for or IIMC. So in 2023, I attended the IIMC Annual Conference in Minneapolis. I was able to, in five days, get sixteen educational credits. In 2024, it was in Calgary, Canada. I don't have a passport, so I chose to do virtual training, which is equally as great. It's just spread out throughout the whole year. They do usually about every other week, on a Thursday or Friday, they'll do a two-hour training. It gets you one educational credit. It runs about sixty dollars. Almost every quarter, there's like a small gap, where it's maybe not every other week. So this year, I budgeted fifteen-hundred dollars for training. I'm not quite sure if I'm going to hit that full mark due to some of the week breaks that they have, but I hope to get fifteen to twenty educational points for the year with that budget. In 2025, they do have another annual conference in St. Louis, Missouri. I am putting that into the budget this year. It would be an increase. The education and training alone, just for registration, would be one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. If you include travel, you know, hotel per diem flights, you're looking at about two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten. If it's not feasible, since we are working on a zero, I want to say zero balance budget, right? Is that what it's called? Yeah. We're working on that kind of a budget this year. I would go back to the virtual. I do feel that there is, like most people would say, a value in going to a conference. There's not many city clerks that you're going to meet, but you put all of them together, and it's a great way to network, a great way to learn. For example, I went to the IIMC conference in Minneapolis. I was able to meet some people from Colorado. Those people from Colorado are in our region. They featured me the next month as the clerk spotlight. Brian helped write up some very good stuff about myself. So I think there's definitely things to learn from that. I met Steve Sprague, who is the Fargo auditor, who also has the same clerk, and I met his deputy. He was a great resource when we started our alcohol ordinance committee, because I knew Fargo runs with a liquor board, and so I was able to call him, ask him about some things, really about some ideas that I've been thinking about off of him. So it did allow for me to meet that, those kind of things, gave me some good ideas. I worked with Derek and with Jennifer. There's a QR code now out there, which allows for electronic agendas. A lot of people do like paper still, so we offer both. But there is the option where people can just use their smartphone, take a picture, and now it's available for you on your phone. So there is some definite, great things about going to the conference, but I understand that if the budget doesn't allow, I would at least take the fifteen-hundred dollars to continue my educational courses with them. Another thing that we asked for in 2024, which we are about to implement, and I'm going to show two training videos about it, is Civic Clerk and the Civic Media software. The media portion of this allows for the bookmarks to be placed into the video recording. So now, if somebody were to want to talk about action item one, they could go to that bookmark instead of trying to find the place throughout the hour, two-hour meeting where that action item is. It will automatically bookmark for them. It's a much more transparent way of being available for questions of the citizens after a council meeting. Another feature it has is a board portal, which allows for electronic voting. Electronic voting would be placed on every monitor. For city council, you have the iPads or some sort of electronic device, so you'd be able to electronic vote yourself. For our planning commission, the electronic voting would be done by the minutes taker. So she would put in the votes, she'd still call a roll call, but then it would place right up on there with a motion, pass, fail, so that there's no question about who voted what. It also would do some documentation as to if they were to say, older woman Olson, what were her votes for year 2023? How many yeses did she do? How many noes? It records that, so you can ask those kind of questions. It also integrates great with our ordinances. So as ordinances get passed and get put in our Munich Code Library, which is also a Civic Plus option, which we already use, it will be able to have a link from that ordinance once it's passed to the meeting in which it passed. So you'd be able to know that, say, ordinance 5295 was approved on a May 6 meeting, and it would take you right to those meeting minutes. And then that would also allow you to look at the agenda, the packet information, and since the bookmark happens with the media, you could go watch that snippet of that media portion for it, too. So it allows a lot more transparency, and I'm not saying we weren't transparent before, it's just a more effective transparency. Other things that I budget for are publication of meeting minutes. That is a voted-on measure, so as long as the measure still gets voted in, we will always need that publication data. We have gotten a little more efficient in that aspect, just because we have maybe made our minutes a little more tight-knit. It's basically all the regulations that you're required to have, and then we let you know that there's a video that you can go watch. So by doing that, and offering this new software, I feel that it will offer people more of knowledge as to what's going on in the meetings with the minimum meeting minutes. Other things that I think we could try to budget for, like Steph said, digital is key. I helped her in trying to look for this 1989 agreement and could not find it. I do have one of those spaces where it could be an endless pit of files, and unfortunately, there are some things that I have to have paper copies of, resolutions, ordinances, signed minutes. Those have to be kept in a paper form, but there are some things that could get scanned. I do my best, but between software committees, councils, other groups that meet that I'm required to take meeting minutes at, it's very difficult to find the time to do it. But since I have moved over into my position, everything since has become digital, and I have been chipping away at all the other stuff. So I think that's all that I have. I don't put a lot into the budget, just kind of the necessities of the job. I do have two training videos, but if you'd like, we can do questions first, or if you want to watch the videos, this might be the only time I will have you all in the same room to ask any questions on the training. And I haven't watched them yet either, but it's two videos, they set at the max ten minutes, and it's just going to show you what the board portal would look like. As a board, you have your own portal you can go into, and allows you to take notes, which are a public record. Any note is that is taken about city business, but it allows you to take notes as you're looking through your agenda. So you can take notes if you have questions for staff members that you want to ask in the public forum. You can do that ahead of time in your board portal. It's also where you're going to do your electronic voting. As I initiate the votes, it'll pop up on there, and you'll have to vote yes or no, things like that. So if, would you like to do the videos first? Okay. Jen, this is you.
Hello, everyone. This is a quick overview of the Civic Clerk Board Portal. Every user will be provided with their own unique username and temporary password. I have already logged in, so I am on the agendas or the homepage. Before we dive into the portal, we will go to the user menu in the top right-hand corner of the page. When you're logged in, your name will appear where my screen says "System Admin." Under the user menu, there is an option for account settings. By clicking here, you will have the option to change your password at any time. Once we fill out the three fields, we can save our new password to secure our account. The next option on the user menu is email preferences. When this option is selected, we will be emailed when new agendas are published to the portal. We can get back to the agendas page by clicking on the agendas tab at the bottom of the page. Once you log into the site, this is the page you will see first. The agendas will show up as these cards and will be listed in chronological order with the most recent agenda first as they become available. To access an agenda, we are just going to click on the appropriate card. If we are at a meeting in progress, we will have the option to join the meeting by clicking on the join meeting button. Next, we can select if we are present and voting, or if we are a present non-voting At the top of the page, we have the option to download a PDF version of the agenda or the full agenda packet. If we click on the agenda, we can see it will quickly download. On all PDFs opened in the board portal, we will have the option to annotate the document. If we click on annotate, we can see various options appear. Here, we can add arrows to point at information. We can also highlight. When we save these notes, they will be here next time we open this PDF document. My annotations are only saved to my account, so only I can see them. I'm going to exit out of this agenda so we can see other features available to us. Back on our agenda page, we can see all of the sections and items on the agenda for this meeting. We can find out more information about an item on the agenda by clicking on the name of the item. Once on the item page, we can see some basic information about the item at the top of the page, such as who created it, the department, and the recommended action. We also see an attachment list. If we were to click on any one of these attachments, they will open in the PDF annotator, just like when we open the agenda. We can see if there are any speakers listed on the right. At the bottom of the page, we have a notes field. Here, we can add any private notes. This field is helpful to add any comments or questions that you have regarding an item. If we add a quick note, we will see this page auto-saves as we add content, so no need to find and click save. At any point, we can go back to the agenda by clicking on the Agenda Details button at the top. Another function available on this page is the flyout menu. By clicking on the three dots next to any section or item, we can see there are a few options for this item. Here, we can see if there are any speakers listed. We can also see if there are any attachments on this item, or we can click on review. By clicking on this option, we'll be brought back to the Item Details page. At the bottom of this page, you will see we can quickly navigate to the previous or next item. You also have the ability to star or favorite an item. This is useful to help remember particular items. If we go back to our Agenda Details page, we will see that item has been starred. If you do enter notes, you will have quick access to all of these notes by clicking on the Notes tab at the bottom of the page. We will then click on the Agenda card to see all of the notes for that particular meeting. You can then click on the note to quickly jump to that Item Details page. That is all we have to cover in this video. If you have any questions, please reach out to one of your administrators for further
Voting piece of the Civic Clerk Board Portal. If you're looking for more information on how to navigate through the board portal, you'll want to watch our Board Portal Overview video. And this piece is just going to walk through how to use the electronic voting portion. When logging into the board portal, we're going to see all of the agendas that we have access to listed here in chronological order. You do have the option to filter these down by clicking on the filter option in the top-left corner, where you can search by meeting name, or you can filter down and search by a date range. So you just pick your from and two dates from the calendars provided, where you would then apply and search for that date frame or date range. Here, we can see the meeting that we are going to join today, and that's indicated by this join meeting. By selecting the join meeting, it's going to give us a few different roll call options. Because we are using the electronic voting piece today, we're going to want to make sure that we list ourselves as present and voting, and we're going to save that option. Here, we can continue to navigate through the board portal, where we can view the agenda or packet or individual meeting files. No matter where you're at in the board portal, when a vote is initiated on an item, you will receive the vote for current item pop-up. Here, we're going to see the item name, followed by the motion, and then our different vote options. We'll select how we're voting, and then save that result. This is going to be recorded onto the clerk's end in the Minutes module, where if using display pages, they would then be able to display those results within your chambers, whether that be on monitors or a projection screen. Those are the steps taken for recording your votes within the board portal. Again, if you need additional information on how to navigate through this portal, please watch the Board Portal Overview video. Thanks.
And I can send those out via email with the password. Unfortunately, in the line of business that we're in, everything that you guys attend is a public meeting, and so it's very hard to train the whole process on this. So staff has kind of decided, because we need a little time, because right now, the product we use, which is Civic Engage, allows for subscribers to use notify me, and notify me allows for agendas to come out and notify the public of when those agendas are, since we feel like that is a very important piece of the puzzle on transparency. The May 20th meeting, we are going to dual-enter. Staff has already said that they were willing to do it for practice, so we are going to duly enter the items, which will allow us to use Civic Clerk Plus, the one that we're training on, and get comfortable with that in creating the agenda. But we're also going to use Civic Engage, and that will allow us to still send out that subscription. It will kind of be like our backup. It would be great as a council if we could, hopefully, the May 20th meeting is a nice agenda to work with, but maybe practice a little bit of this online voting and, you know, online roll call and all that kind of stuff, so that we can see how it works, but maybe still call the roll. So all I am asking is for the time and the patience to learn the system, because learning the whole process is kind of a trial and error when it comes to open public meetings. So I will be learning along with you some of this stuff, and staff is going to be learning a lot, too, with the entering of how we do agendas, but we hope that the, our last training with them is the 13th of May. We hope to start pushing out how to newly subscribe to the new platform, because unfortunately, due to privacy issues, we can't take our old subscribers and move them into the new system. They just have to go in and reapply for subscriptions. So we will be working with the media that we're required to work on, especially the Minnetonka Daily News, on making sure that they are subscribed, because it's a requirement for public meetings to notify the public or the newspaper. But we also want to give the citizens and the other media the opportunity to get subscribed to before we fully go on to that platform. So we're hoping the first meeting in June will be the first time we're only using that platform, but this next meeting on May 20th, we hope to duly enter. Any questions?
Any questions? Steve?
So did you finally get certified or not?
No. So unfortunately, IIMC, I have not been there for a full two years yet. They used to do it where you could partially turn in your certification, and they would tell you how many points you need in the certain areas. I have only been the city clerk for about two and a half years, and I don't believe I registered right away for IIMC, so I probably have a full year that I still need to do in that two years of requirements. The other part of it is the experience portion of it. You only get so many experience points per year that you're a city clerk, but they will take in consideration jobs you've done before, they will allow you to use extra educational stuff. When I get close to feeling like I have it complete, I can turn it in, because they will take my transcripts as well from Minnetonka State and apply any of my education from MSU to some of this educational or experience as well. So I am hopeful that in the two years that I'm a standing member there, that I will be very close to being accredited.
So you need experience plus some more continuing education?
Yeah, you need sixty educational points and fifty experience points.
And how many educational points do you have now?
Just with that one conference, I got sixteen, plus I think you can get up to twenty in your, like, college education, even though it's not for public administration, it's for business management and marketing, is the one I have. And I believe that's twenty points, and then with my fifteen to twenty that I'm getting this year, I'll be very close on the educational part, and I will have to start working more on the experience part, which a lot of it comes with just being a city clerk. So unfortunately, that's the case for that, but hopefully, I'll be able to use maybe next year's educational points towards the experience part, too.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Lisa?
So just a quick question. I'm assuming that for the online voting, that if someone is attending via Teams, they'll still be able to vote?
Yes. So it's a web-based subscription, so you don't have to be connected to our drive, our internet, or anything like that. You just have to have your own sign-in, and you have to sign into the board portal.
Okay, let's talk about workload. What's your responsibility? I know this is a loaded question, but, you know, it may be something that not everybody is familiar with, how much you do.
Okay, so I do licensing for the city. I license tobacco, gaming, and alcohol on a yearly basis, along with secondhand. I feel like I might be forgetting something, too. But also secondhand, so I for sure do those for, there might be one I'm forgetting. Along with those annual ones, I issue the special event permits and the local raffle permits. I mean, and those are a daily basis, those come in, leave. We usually try to do a two-to-five-day turnaround, depending on staff for those. So we work really hard on making sure that people can get their events done. I also am required to attend all city council meetings. Anytime the council meets as a quorum where city business is discussed, I'm required to attend and take minutes for, which most of the time also means preparing an agenda. I am also required to attend any mayoral-appointed committees. I also, every other year, do the liaison committee meeting minutes. I have been asked to do the MPO minutes and agendas. I also do the Renaissance Zone meeting minutes and agendas. I do a lot of research and work with our alcohol ordinance committee right now. I usually participate in any conversations when it comes to any violations on the alcohol ordinance, because a big process is the notifying and certifying of any public hearings for those. I keep all the resolutions and ordinances, I make sure all those get sent, and as they get approved, I work closely with every department, just on a records-keeping basis with contracts. Anytime a contract goes through council or the mayor's authorized to sign, I keep a record of it, so I have probably a little notebook, four pages long, about all the ones that have come to me, all the ones I haven't received yet, so that I can keep track of what I still need a copy of that we've approved at council. And that's just a small portion of it. I've worked with the engineering department for the last probably six or seven months on CityWorks. This is the first year that I use CityWorks for alcohol, but I entered every one of the alcohol license holders into the system, so that next year, it's an easy renewal for them, but that was all work on my end. We did get the special event permits up in the system. We're working on gaming and local permits. I work really closely with the state, because the local permits come to me first, but the end-all, approve-all is with the state, so I work really closely with them. I'm on the phone with Nikki probably once a week, just kind of making sure we're up to date. We also got tobacco in the system now, so we can issue tobacco in that. I work closely with departments on changing of ordinances that affect the application And that's, I mean, that's just what comes off the top of my head. But it's basically anything the city council, city manager, or anyone directs me to do, I try to fit in.
How much time do you spend on Freedom of Information requests?
Oh, open records, yeah, forgot about that one. But yes, I do spend quite a bit of time on there, and it's an annual check-in. I am one of the administrators for next requests, along with Tricia Guthrie, who's in the PD, who handles all the PD open requests. I am responsible for making sure that we, as a whole, are answering in a timely and effective manner. It was very reiterated to me that it's not weeks, it's days, they want responses, and yes, staff time has to allow for it, but we have to communicate, we have to keep the open communication so that we're not in violation. So on a daily basis, I check next requests, I see what new ones have come in for any department other than the police department, because they have their own records department. And I try to work with staff via the system, email, phone calls, to make sure that they're getting the information to me or into the system in a timely fashion, so that, it's a So that, it's a good chunk of my time, depending on the request.
Any other comments or questions? Lisa?
I remember you sharing this with us a few years ago, but what's the ballpark figure on advertising the minutes in our local newspaper?
It used to be more because we used to put more of the discussion that the council would have in the minutes. I want to say I'm...
Jenna, if I'm wrong, am I at like $18,000 in the budget?
So it's about $18,000. I try to keep the minutes, every publication, about 600 or less. One of the things, you know, that takes up a lot of the funding for the publications is the first meeting of the month, we're required to publicize our bills, and those become part of the meeting minutes. Is it an ordinance change we can do? I'm not really sure because we do have them published on the website for the agenda, but things to think about later on. But about $18,000 covers all the special meetings too.
Thank you.
Anything else, council or candidates? Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you.
Well, Chris, if you're ready, we can just jump right on to our 330 How Resilience in NDR Program presentation.
Mayor Ross, members of the council, and candidates. My name is Chris Plank. I'm the administrator for the National Disaster Resilience Program with the city. What, next slide, please. Jen?